See him in the meeting.
When his application comes up on the agenda, the deputy commissioner will elevate him to a panelist. He'll be able to share his theme. And he should be seen well as heard at that time.
So, Mr. Demore, we can't test your video image right now. Um.
So, we're live on Facebook.
Okay. Hello, everybody. You are joining Facebook Live. And this is the zoning board of appeals meeting. And we're waiting on Conrad. Conrad, is he on the phone? We are gonna begin the meeting as soon as we have quorum. And quorum means.
In the meantime, we can go get some ice cream.
I know.
You hear the truck? I'm sorry, the windows are open. So, yes, we can get ice cream. Literally. We may have time to do that. We apologize, those of you who are waiting. So, in order to make this meeting official, we must have at least three board members. What you see in your screen right now, it is Aleida Castillo sitting in for Chairman Davidson, who is the zoning board chair. And we have our several competent attorneys counsel on the screen, Niketchi, who has been helping us along all year and who is gonna be with us through the end of August. And then we have Ms. Lockett, counsel, working under the direction of our corporation counsel, Brian Johnson. And we have another image of a city of Mount Vernon logo, which is.
Aleida, can you hear me now?
Molina, yes.
Okay, hold on, I have to turn the video on and we're good to go.
Okay, and that was the other person that we're waiting for, Conrad Cutler, who is a member of the board. Yay.
All right, go ahead. Sorry.
That's all right. How did you like that narration? Um, okay.
And if that.
You switched. There you are. So, I was like, what happened? Wait. And then, well, we have to actually go through the everybody.
Introduce Mr. Johnson. You didn't get.
Right. So, we have Ms. Darden. So, you're all gonna state your names as we begin the meeting officially. But I was really just trying to not have dead air while we're live on Facebook. So, we can begin the meeting. I have my. Is that how it goes? There's something you.
The gavel.
The gavel, yes.
Feel like we're on Jeopardy, gavel. What is a gavel?
All right, everybody, thank you very much for joining us tonight. We are opening the meeting, zoning board of appeals meeting. Today's date is August 18. And you're right. And now that I see that the meeting was initially announced for 6:30, so I apologize for the confusion. We begin the meeting. My name is Aleida Castillo. And if all the members and counsel can announce themselves, I guess.
I'll start.
Members first.
Conrad Cutler.
Okay.
Darden.
Now, the councils.
I'm Brian Johnson, corporation counsel for the city of Mount Vernon, New York.
Janitra Lockett, corporation counsel.
Niketchi Wachukua, outside counsel to the land use boards.
Thank you. Now, first item on the agenda, it is roll call. And we've done that. And do we have any minutes? Approval of minutes from the last meeting?
There are minutes at this time.
So, we should make a motion to what? Approve the minutes at a later time. Ms. Darden.
Table the minutes.
Table the minute.
We, we will, I present a motion to approve minutes when they are approved. Oh, excuse me, when they are. They're prepared.
Second.
Great. Moving on to item three, we are opening the public. Meeting.
Would you like to take a vote on table?
No, I'm sorry. Those who, those who oppose, those who are, how does this go? Those, those who oppose.
Those who oppose the delay of the, of the vote of the minutes.
Of the minutes and those who are agree. Say aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
Okay, duly noted.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to, I'm sorry, guys. Moving on to calendar item 3.1, 1753 Z, 351 South First Avenue. And the applicant Cassandra Taylor, represented by Edward Di Amore, seeks to construct a garage in the rear of the house. The applicant does not need the appropriate setbacks required to construct the driveway. Therefore, the area variances are requested. This application has been already before us. And Ted Di Amore, I believe you need to be let in if you're not in already because we can't see you. Mr. Molina, Commissioner Molina.
He's being let in now.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like he's in. He has to be on. Ted, you have to unmute yourself.
So, if you hear us, Ted, we don't see video yet. There you are. How you doing? Oh, we still can't hear you. I can read lips, but I can't hear you. So, try doing the setting of your microphone. Click on the microphone and then select your computer audio as mic.
May want to look to your left where there's a microphone and a mute button at the bottom of the screen.
And if you find that mic, you select the little arrow that goes up and it gives you options.
I think he might have to hold down the spacebar while he talks. Ted, try holding down the spacebar.
Nope. Not yet.
Yeah, yeah, you're good. I think yes. Keep holding down the spacebar while you speak like a walkie talkie.
What's this?
There you go.
So, keep your hand on the spacebar, I guess. That's a good idea.
All right. So, all right.
Ted, when you're not speaking, take your hand off the spacebar. So, it's gonna release the audio so someone else can speak.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not sure if all of you were at the meeting of when I first made the presentation. So, if you'd like, I can update you if you haven't read the minutes of the last couple of meetings.
Well, we, we were present at the meeting. So, basically, where we need to update, an update on the changes. And then you went to the other boards after that meeting?
Yes, I did.
Okay. That's where we are.
Niketchi was there too. She was going to prepare letters that would affirm that the other two boards had no problems with this project. And I don't know if that happened or not.
Yes, I can report that the ARB at its July 22 meeting and the planning board at its August 5 meeting both felt that the proposed driveway and garage, as well as the new wheelchair lift to be installed in the front. The application does not, is in keeping with the community character. They found that at least 17 other properties also had similar driveways. Most homes are built on undersized lots. So, they also have driveways that are but right next to neighboring properties. They have similar garages. So, what applicant is proposing here is not out of character with the community. And they also found that the proposed wheelchair lift is a reasonable accommodation for the wheelchair-bound occupants of the home.
Okay. Mr. Di Amore, you gotta hold the spacebar.
Can't hear you.
Hold the spacebar so we could hear you.
Okay, how about now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm back on. All right, so, the Niketchi actually gave the, gave the presentation I was gonna give. Thank you very much. We have a driveway that is running up the south side of the house. It's supposed to be three feet away from the property line, but the side yard is nine feet four. So, we're gonna be four inches away from the property line. The other four inches is gonna be taken up by a solid vinyl fence that won't disturb the neighbor at all. That doesn't need a variance. It just needs a regular building permit. And that'll be on, that's on our site plan already. The garage itself meets the requirements for setbacks, both backyard and side yard. And we are over the percentage allowable for impervious surface. But we're only over by a little bit. If you give, give us credit for having a porous pavement because the definition of impervious means that water can't go through it. We have a pavement which is porous, so the water does go through it. So, our real impervious surface is 58% where the limit is 50%. So, we're not that much over. And the building coverage allowable is 35%. And we're at 35.14%. So, that's de minimis. But we wanted to do the numbers right. And we made a presentation in previous meetings how we felt we met all the points necessary for the granting the applicant a variance, such as whether it has a negative impact on the community, whether it changes very much in the community and so on and so forth. And you have that all before you in the statement of points.
So, for the sake of this meeting, if I may interrupt real quick, Mr. Di Amore, can you go through those that, those criteria in order? And.
Yes.
I know you did it before, but.
Give me one second.
Mr. Di Amore, if you want to share your screen, I've allowed you to share your screen.
I don't need to share the screen so much as I'm, I'm gonna read the points that the zoning board has to consider before they can grant the zoning variance, which are whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of an area variance. And we believe that the creation of the garage in the rear yard will be a benefit detriment because adding a garage makes the property compliant because the zone requires a garage. It didn't when the house was built, but it does now. We are only making a 12-foot curb cut and we'll be able to take two cars off the street on a very crowded street. So, that's a benefit, not a detriment to the community. So, that covers, covers that point. Next is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. And there's no other way to achieve a code-compliant off-street parking space on this lot but to have a driveway in this narrow yard. And it is exactly what 17 other properties have on this block alone. And these narrow, undersized lots, only about 40 feet wide, are typical of this neighborhood for a block north of us and a block south of us as well. But in the documentation that I provided you, I only highlighted 17 on our block. All right, so that covers that point. Now, whether the area variance is substantial. We say that the variance for lot coverage, now that I've corrected the, the mathematics, there were only 14 hundredths of a percent over the 35% of lot coverage allowed. I believe you'll agree that that's de minimis and not not a substantial variance. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. And we say that if the variance is granted, it'll have no adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood because this is already a fully built-up neighborhood and we are just adding a driveway and a garage. And we're taking one or two cars off the street and only using up 12 feet of curb space to do that. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration is relevant but does not preclude the granting of the variance. And this proposal is only self-created to the extent that the applicant wishes to have a garage for her car, like most of her neighbors, and a patio in the rear yard for her mother, who is wheelchair-bound. And that's the aspect that makes it a self-created hardship. But we believe the benefits far outweigh the fact that it is self-created. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Darden, Commissioner Cutler?
No.
No, I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Di Amore, do you have, you're the property owner or anyone else want to make a comment? I think we've listened to this enough and we have enough information to render a vote.
May I ask, Commissioner, Mr. Di Amore, did you submit specs for the imperv, for the pervious first you plan to use?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Two meetings ago and it was submitted within three weeks. And it's on the draw, the recent drawings that were resubmitted June 8.
Okay, thank you. So, Commissioner Castillo and other members, I would just maybe suggest that those specs, that be included as a condition since he said it does have an impact on the impervious coverage that he do use the pervious pavers that he proposed.
Pavers that you proposed in the drawing? Is that what you're suggesting? Yes.
Yes.
So, we are ready to render our votes on this application. And we place the condition that you use those provided in the drawing on June 8. Commissioner Darden.
You want to see if.
You want to make a motion to vote this item, correct?
You, yes.
I second your motion to vote.
You, do, do you want to make a motion? Do I make the motion?
Chairman Davis makes the motion and then, yes.
So, I make a motion that we approve.
Commissioner.
May I speak for a second?
Yes.
Make sure that we've had, if there are any comments from anybody in the public to be heard on the public hearing. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, we've, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know that.
I didn't see any comments for this particular item for another item on the agenda. I've been scrolling. Ms. Lockett, I've been scrolling through.
I didn't see any and we did receive comments in the previous meetings. But I could call it out. Is there anyone, any member of the public that wished to comment on this particular project, 351 South Fifth Avenue? I don't see anyone. Okay.
Um.
I just want to say, you're, you're, Ms. Castillo, you're serving as the chair, right?
Yes.
So, you don't make the motion? One of the other members should make the motion.
You wanted to add something else. Go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, I've been doing this for a few years now. Before you can make a motion for the vote, you have to make a motion and a vote to close the public hearing just so there's no problems afterwards. And then you can take your vote.
That's the motion I'm making. I'm not the, making the motion to make the vote. So, Ms. Darden, I'll make a motion. So, everyone, the last time I did this.
You, no, no, hold on. You will accept, you will accept the motion, you will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
I would like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Thank you.
I will accept the motion that we close this public hearing.
And a vote?
A vote.
Now, I make another motion to enter into a vote regarding 351 South, second or first avenue.
First avenue.
First avenue.
Lot first.
I'm sorry, the vote to close the public hearing?
Vote to close the public hearing.
I accept.
All, all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none. Okay.
I would like to make a motion to enter into a vote to approve the proposed project at 351 South First Avenue.
I'd like to second.
With the condition?
With the condition that the impervious paver specified in the, the June or July 8 plans be a condition to approval.
Pervious pavers, not impervious.
Oh, pervious, sorry. Water can go through them.
And am I accepting that motion, councilman? I mean, councilman, look at that. Corporation counsel, Brian Johnson.
So, what I, what I, what I, what I meant is if you wanted to jog one of your colleagues to make the motion, you say, I will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
I'm asking.
We're glad that you accepted it after it was adopted as well.
I'm asking, I'm asking without asking. Okay.
Well, Mr. Cutler put the motion up there. I second the motion to take it to a vote with the condition.
With the condition, so now we accept the motion? Why am I, my brain is completely fried on this process.
Lena, accept the motion, all in favor.
All in favor. All opposed and all in favor. Say aye.
First, all in favor, aye.
All in favor, aye.
All right, aye. We're all in favor. So, we've adopted this, we've approved this. What is the next line, Niketchi?
I just wanted to make sure I'm taking.
Thank you very much.
So, all were in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, all opposed. Okay, motion is adopted, project is approved.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Di Amore, thank you, I appreciate it.
A lot of you have known me for several years. I've heard my last name pronounced three different ways tonight.
Yes.
It's Demore.
Demore.
Oh, I say Di Amore, right? And that's wrong.
Demore.
And how long have I known you? Okay, Demore, Demore, right? Okay.
That's it, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. So, this will be less painful as we move forward. We're moving on to the next calendar item, 3.2, calendar 1749 Z, 341 North High Street. This is Tom Abalama. Do we have Tom on the line? Let me see. I'm not sure if we do or not.
He, he will be joining shortly.
Okay, I think there he is. So, on this matter, the applicant Shahid Mahmood, represented by Tom Abalama, seeks to convert a non-conforming light industrial use into a mixed-use structure by expanding the non-conforming use. Use and area variances are requested. This is a property also that we have secret determination needed. This is unlisted action. It is coordinated review. The zoning board must declare its intent to be lead agency prior to rendering any decisions in accordance to New York C R R 6176 B 3 of the New York State Code, Rules and Regulations. Mr. Abalama, are you on? There you are.
How are you? Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are you? Good?
Very good, very good. So, this application is in regards, let, let me try to see if I can technically share the screen. So, you can hear me well, huh?
Yes, very well, very well.
Good evening. So, this application is in regards to a property located in between North High Avenue and Lincoln Avenue. This is, the bottom portion here is the existing locate, existing condition of the, of the structure. It's a two-story structure. It's landlocked. And let me show you how landlocked that, that this application is. We have West Lincoln Avenue on the bottom of the screen here. We have North High Street on the screen here. And we have Oakley Place also and ending at the property. Or. Ending at the parking and, and the parking lot in the front. And. So, the history of this project is that we went to the zoning board. I have, I get, I'm getting a feedback from, for my, with my voice. I don't know if that's, you're getting the same thing.
We can still hear you, it's just delayed. Keep on.
So, so this, the history of this project is that we went to the zoning board about probably a year and a half ago, maybe more. And, and we, and we presented to the board. At the time, it was suggested to go to the city council. And it lingered with the city council all this time. We have several projects. Our firm has several projects, projects before the city council still awaiting to be, to be started. So, to lighten the load from the city council, we, after appearing with the financial, finance and planning committee with the city council, presenting all these projects, they chose that those, this project is one of the two projects to, to go back to the zoning board. Being it's.
Who's that? The city council chose or your firm chose?
The, the committee, the committee, which is the city council, to go back. They liked the project, but it's not that they want to unload it or anything as I, as I heard earlier in the work session. So, that's a, a project they, they, they sent back to the zoning board being that there's no use variance involved in it. It's just simply area variances. And I'll run you over the existing conditions. So, let me share this screen with you. On the bottom right, that's a certificate which shows that the building, even though it's situated in RMF 10 zone, which is a multifamily zone, it's, it's been approved through a zoning variance back in 1963, I guess, if I'm not wrong, to have, to include an industrial use in it, plus some offices and such. Now, the, the new owner bought it for their own use. They're a construction company. But they haven't been able to lease the, the rest of the structure in the past three years. And so, therefore, they came in and requested from me to provide them with a project where they can have some residential use. And, and therefore, they can be able to get it to be utilized. So, the existing conditions right now on the ground floor, we have some offices on the right side, and the rest of it is mainly mechanical and storage. On the second floor also, there are offices and some storage. So what we're proposing to have is, on the ground level, to to have, to keep some certain offices on the right side, and to add some parking, door parking in the middle, in the core of the structure, and organize the parking with a handicap space on the side that abuts Oakley Place. On the second floor, we propose to have six apartments, six lofts. So to have, and then we add another story, we're proposing to add another story to it, a third floor, with, with four lofts also. So those lofts, their workplace lofts, and, and each one of them will have a space on the bottom level such as they, if somebody is, is an artist, would have his or her own studio down on the grade level, and then they could live on the right floor.
Sorry, Mr. Abalama, let me just say, if y'all can hear me, if you either have the Facebook on or you're on the call, mute yourself while someone is speaking so that we don't hear feedback. And if you have the Facebook open, as well as the Zoom, we will have feedback. Thank you. Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
So this is the, as, as I indicated earlier, this is the existing structure right now. We're trying to turn it, we'll give it some to the look on both sides. So this is the, the high, the not, the, the, sorry, the West Lincoln entrance, and that's the Oakley entrance here. And this is the, the, the other side, which faces North High. So now, I want to show you what's going on very briefly with the neighborhood. This is the, the structure itself, and, and we have an easement coming in from North High, another easement coming in from Lincoln Avenue. And, and then this is Oakley access to the parking lot here. And these are the pictures of the neighboring structures. Can tell the old X Club is adjacent to the property. And on North High, you have two or three family structures. And our structure itself will be non-distant, being, being its interior. And you can be able to see it from the parking lot of the old X Club, and from the rear yard of one of the neighbors. And then the other neighbors off of North High, they'll, they'll also see the structure as they see it right now, as it exists. I can point to the area where the driveway is to go through that structure. We'll, we'll be raising it by one story. So our proposed use is conforming with the zoning. It's an RMF 10 and multifamily residential units are permitted as a right in that zone. So in essence, what we're doing, we're turning the structure to a more conforming use. But there'll be few variances involved. Let me share with you the zoning chart. Can you see this chart?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm going to list the variances that are needed. As far as the lot coverage, what's, 40% is the maximum permitted, and the existing is 50.9%. The proposed is 59, 50.9%. Technically, there's a variance required, even though we're not increasing the lot coverage. The impervious lot coverage is 70%. The existing is 100%, and the proposed is 100%. Again, a variance is needed, even though we're not increasing or decreasing the impervious surfaces. The lot area per dwelling is 2,250 square feet, and our proposal will yield to 1,317 square feet. That's a variance that's needed. And the front yard setback is required to be 20 feet, and existing is zero, being it's a landlocked property, and we propose zero foot, zero inches. That's also a variance that's required, even though we're not increasing it or decreasing it. So if you noticed, the, the, the height is permitted, and all the other variances that are requested are really not changing or increasing the existing non-conformity. So, and so therefore, we believe that, you know, this, this application is a, is a good application that would, would benefit the neighborhood, instead of having an existing structure that, that's almost in a dilapidated condition, that would, would, would really provide a more beautiful addition to the neighborhood. And there, and the use is, is a nice new use because it's a loft. Addition, you know, the proposals are lots. They'll be able to live and work at the same time. So I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a nice project. I don't know if Jack Adesso is, is available to, to share his opinion on this, but he's the lawyer for the application, but it seems like he's not present.
Oh, you and Adesso are working on all three, North High Street, West Second and South Fifth Avenue?
No, South Fifth Avenue is, is somebody else.
Okay.
But he's working on both, on, yes, on this one and the 65 West Second.
Is the applicant here as well, or just yourself and Mr. Adesso?
The applicant was, I think he's, he's present, but I don't see him, him available in the, in the list of screens that I have here in front of me.
There's a, there's a Jack on the call. I don't know if that's-
I'm here, I'm here. Okay, Jack. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. So to start, it was expressed that the applicant tried for several years to try and make use of the property and attract a tenant for the existing structure. Can you explain what steps were taken and what the result was, as far as trying to find a tenant?
Well, the, the standard steps were taken, the, the property was given to real estate brokers, various real estate brokers, who listed the property for rentals, and nobody was interested in taking the building for rent, either partially or completely, you know, in, in the condition, in the condition that it is. And as Tom has indicated, it's a difficult building, you know, because of the location and the, the different uses that were present in there, okay? And, and this particular use, being a residential use, is actually a use that fits better in the neighborhood and, and makes the property more viable for rental purposes as, as residences. But as, as a business or a commercial use, there really were no takers because of the location of the property and the surrounding area set up of the building, et cetera.
So i- if it was unsuccessful in matriculating tenants for the commercial use, what's the thought process behind having artists' lofts hybrid with residential housing? Why, why the artist loft component?
Well, because they would be living in the, in the, in the building, you know, in, in the loft, it would be a, 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 a work-live space.
So these are rentals?
These are, I understand, yes. Yeah.
I'm still a little confused in the concept of live-work and the success that it's had previously. Are there any other examples that perhaps I'm not aware of in the city of Mount Vernon, where live-work has been successful and hasn't bred other issues?
Well, let me put it to you this way. I don't know of any uses in the city of Mount Vernon currently that are live-work. I do know that there was considerable interest a number of years ago to, to put particular areas of the city, mainly the downtown areas, with live-work spaces. Unfortunately, it didn't get any legislation, which would have been required to make it a more palatable use, because if you're going to come in there and start developing different buildings, the concept was, let's have a, an area where these buildings could be located and where the, the work, live spaces could be acceptable. I don't believe that exists in the city of Mount Vernon. So what you're doing, as, as the applicant here is doing, is taking the space and, and doing something with it that he believes will be successful, and it may be the first of its kind in the city, but we think it has a very high level of success that way.
I, I get, I get the concept, and I get it's been done in other places. You know, I guess what my fear is, is that live-work with the square footage as proposed per dwelling, if they're unable to attract a tenant that's able to utilize the live-work concept, it becomes a housing for a very large family, which will then put further strain on the sparse resources that we all know the city of Mount Vernon has.
And, and again, I wanted to know, why was this application withdrawn if it met all the requirements?
Let me, let me address that. This application wasn't withdrawn, okay? This application was sent to the city council because at the time, the city council expressed an interest in having the project sent to them, okay? This project, the other project that Mr. Abalama has, and a number of other ones, was sent to the city council at the request of the council. You have a letter which states that we have sent it over to the council, but we reserved our rights to continue before the zoning board, in the event that the council chose either not to take it and, and deal with it, or to send it back. And listening earlier on to your work session, I'm a little confused as to what it's doing here. If, if the council is still not certain that it doesn't want to deal with this project and the other project that Mr. Abalama has on here tonight, then what are we doing here? So if they're going to take it back, if they're going to take it back, when Mr. Zarin is on board and, and go through the review process, you know, that the council would have for a rezone, well, then we're going to be back before the council again, as I see it. So-
But we're, we're not here to waste your time, and hopefully if the project makes sense, we can move you through so that the project can commence, so you don't get bounced between boards and spin your wheels.
Well, here's, if I may, Jack, I think you, you make a good point, and I think this is the, a good opportunity for the corporation council as well to speak, because the, the city council explicitly said in the letter that it is more appropriate for the rezoning, which is why they wanted to have it under consideration. And I believe at the time of this letter was written, the resources for the council to take these three applications, Jack, that Mr. Adesso that you have, were, were not there. So if, if, if Corporation Council, Brian Johnson can speak on what happened today, that, that would be helpful, I think, to understand what will happen from here on out. So we were opening to hear, hear the application, but at the end of the day, this still falls under rezoning, and it should be under consideration of the council and of the will of the council. City council, yes. Corporation Council, are you able, I don't see you. I don't know if he's there.
And Corp. Counselor, can, can I read the-
I'm here.
Previous Corporation, Corporation Counsel, can I read the previous letters into the record, just for a little context?
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just as a little history to bring us up to today. I'm reading from an October 29, 2019, letter from the city clerk, George Brown, who was writing on behalf of the city council. The letter is going to Chairman Erwin Davison and all honorable members of the zoning board of appeals. The subject line, pending applications for 65 West Second Street, 341 North High Street, and 417 South Fifth Avenue. Dear Chair, Chairman Davison and members of the zoning board of appeals, I am writing on behalf of the city council to advise the zoning board of appeals that the council has accepted jurisdiction over the development applications currently pending before it regarding 65 West Second Street, 341 North High Street, and 417 South Fifth Avenue. Having reviewed these applications and met with the applicants on October 21, 2019, the city council believes that these applications are more appropriately considered requests for rezonings as compared to use variances under New York law, based upon their impact on the city's current zoning scheme and ability to even meet requisite use variance standards. The city council thanks you for your understanding and cooperation in these matters. Sincerely, George W. Brown, City Clerk. And that's followed up by a letter from attorney Jack Adesso dated December 3, 2019, to Planning Administrator William Long regarding 341 North High Street. Dear Mr. Long, as requested at the last zoning board of appeals meeting, the applicant in the above zoning board application is withdrawing the application without prejudice. The applicant has decided to make an application before the city council for a zone change for the property. Pending a determination by the city council, the applicant reserves the right to submit the same application to the zoning board of appeals if necessary. Thank you for your cooperation. Very truly yours, Jack A. Adesso. And as was mentioned, I think, by Mr. Abalama earlier, the council, the application has been pending before the city council. These were dated back in late, early winter. So it is now just being resubmitted to the zoning board after several months, and Corporation Counsel, I'll turn it over to you, because I believe there were some very recent developments.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Niketchi. So basically, this morning, the Board of Estimate ratified, I guess you will, city council ordinance that retained the services of Michael Zarin, Zarin and Steinman's law firm to act as the escrow agent-
Michael Zaren, Zaren and Steinman's law firm to act as the escrow agent for uh the redevelopment projects. Um it was after uh trying to get this done internally after many months, and it did not appear that it was happening. And so we looked um for a rather a a different measure to keep the redevelopment going along. So now we have that kind of disposal and these are the time that we'll be setting up these escrow accounts so the projects can start moving um along.
Uh also, if I may in uh intervene a little bit, uh at at that meeting that uh Mr. Your counselor were there, Mr. Brian Johnson, you were there at the meeting when Marcus Griffith uh stated that he was gonna send a letter to the board for of these projects of this one, uh sixty five West Second. Uh but I don't know that that uh has been sent to the zoning board or not. Um that should have been sent within the last week or two. Um but I mean, that was the intent from from the city council uh is to support these two applications.
Well, the facilitation of the letter from the city council to the zoning board would have been through the deputy city clerk, so I I'm not aware of the status of that letter at this time.
But as you might well recall, he stated that in that meeting where you were present. You were present, so.
Okay, I I didn't dispute that, but we were talking about whether or not a letter has actually arrived.
Well, if if I can interject, if I can interject just for a moment, if if this is, if these cases are part of a overall rezone plan and the city council wants to deal with it in that manner, then we have to know as applicants what's going on from this point forward. Most of the applicants have paid a sum of money into what we believe was an escrow account so that the money could be utilized by the special counsel that I believe have just been appointed today to to review these matters. So if this is a matter that's going to be a city council issue, then we have to know that because otherwise, what you're spinning our wheels?
Well, I I I think that I think that's fair. Just think that there needs to be a simple follow-up, right? As to um whether we can definitely find points um prepared for later and send it to the board to be out.
Sorry, we're getting some feedback, so we can't hear you.
Yeah, somebody's listening to some funky rock music, but.
I thought it was you, Brian.
That's not my style, buddy. But anyway, um so we just, it sounds like a simple, just uh you know, checking in with the deputy clerk and um and seeing what the pleasure of the council is uh as it relates to the zoning board. Look, I I think that um we're poised to move projects forward. I'm excited about what happens today. So we'll just try to uh dot the I, then cross the D and get everybody moving along.
So sho- should we say then that uh for the purpose of these meetings and uh Odessa is over these three uh projects stated in the letter for the city council that we um uh list our intent do this our intent to be the lead agency and then um the city council and the law department and 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 you guys can meet over what's gonna happen moving forward with the projects before it can come back to us if necessary?
Sure, that's fine. I don't I don't have a problem with that. We're gonna, you know, as you know, um we're transitioning lawyers who are going to be working on laying use boards. So we're gonna get up to speed with before the next meeting to find out about the escrow, how much money's in the escrow, the projects and and what needs to be done.
You have a comment?
Uh does that answer your question?
Um yes, it answers my question, but I believe uh Council Lockett, I you were trying to speak, right? We couldn't hear you.
Yes, I'm sorry. I hope.
Okay, there we go.
Me now. Um in regards to the lead agency issue, I I would say that what we should do.
Oh. We're losing you again.
If they want to do a rezoning, the seeker is going to be um a matter of the rezoning issue where be you'll be evaluating that versus if you're evaluating just based on the zoning board application, it would be for the variances. So you don't know exactly which one you're evaluating for seeker, so we might need to wait for the city council to weigh in on if they're going to be taking these applications back before we determine if we're going to be lead agency.
Which was my concern because the lead agency status obviously is very important. And if the council is gonna take the lead agency status because they're looking at a a rezone uh of the city or of a particular area of the city, well, then obviously they're gonna be lead agency and the seeker would have to follow that particular path.
Which was where we were before, and that's what you were hoping that would happen once you went, but we were not ready there now. So I'm getting that we're more ready now than we were then.
As I as I understand it, the problem was getting the money to Mr. Zaren. I believe the controller's office was reluctant to pay the money over to him for whatever reason, okay? And and the council uh had to meet to determine how they can uh have that happen w- without the controller's involvement, as I understand.
But let let me interject to Jack a little bit here. This application has nothing to do with rezoning where where what we're proposing falls within the existing zoning uh requirements. As a matter of fact, we're making the the building more conforming than what it is right now. Right now, it has a industrial use. Uh so a lot of office spaces and storage warehouse. Uh and it's in the certificate of occupancy, and what we're trying to do eliminate most of these uses and turn them into residential use.
I don't disagree with that, Tom. All I'm saying is the council right now has indicated, at least in writing.
No, no, but this this goes back to December. Marcus Marcus was supposed to be sending a letter to the the zoning board indicating that they're in full support of this application to be before the zoning board. Now, that letter never arrived. This is not our fault, but uh what the intent would from the city council is to have the zoning board be the lead agency on this project. A- and and that's what we we'd like to, you know, to stop being going back and forth between.
Right, right, right. So then uh we can make the 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 intent to be the lead agency and allow for time for that letter to arrive to this board and if, in fact, that was the city council's decision. And in the meantime, uh before uh drawing that intent, listen to any um comments from the public that's already here. Um.
Well, Lynn, I think that's what we should do. I don't think it's fair to the applicant to keep tying them up because the city council hasn't proceeded. So why don't we proceed with the application, get any questions out of the way, and we can always hand over the file, but it doesn't look like that's the way it's gonna go. So instead of deciding what's going on and taking up Mr. Odessa uh time, I think that we should proceed to review the application accordingly.
We um uh we're going to um listen to, are there any members of the public that have any comments uh in favor of this application? And that's three forty one North High Street. Um and we'll listen to them now. Um Mr. Odessa, it it's, we can go through, we can go after that to three point three or four four point one if you wish, so that we can hear uh comments from the public and get that out of the way. And then and then also, um you know, leave that uh that that intent to be the lead agency and then we will buy us time to 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 work out the rest.
I don't I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with that. I think, in fact, if you were to circulate a letter indicating your desire to become lead agency, okay, then the council or whoever would have to respond to it. And if they decide they want to be lead agent, well, then obviously it's gonna be a case that they want to take jurisdictional. If not, it stays with you.
Okay, we'll do that. Uh is there any member of the public? Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Um I have to I have to I have to jump off the call now, but I see that there's a lot of people in the in the room for four seventeen. And and I know in the last meeting I said it, so I just wanna say I accepted two um I think uh consents from people who were trying to come uh with regard to the next project, which is four seventeen. Um and so they need to be heard in their comments. Um so just be on a lookout for those people that tried to come to the meeting personally.
But uh.
And I believe there was a comment.
Do we know who those people are or somebody in touch with them if they're in the room right now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um I have it and I'm gonna send it. It's uh uh Mr. Donald Novett Walker uh and a Miss Doris Randolph. Those are people for the next project, that is, that came and appeared.
Next project is sixty five West Second.
Well, I'm sorry. Let me be very clear.
Four seventeen South Fifth, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we got it. Okay.
Okay. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
I'm gonna, okay. So are are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this project north, uh three forty one North High Street? Uh we're on now. Let me see. And Mr. Molina, are you there? Uh Commissioner Molina?
Yes, I'm here. I've asked the public to raise their hands so we can identify them. But I don't see anyone.
Who has their hands raised now? I see two.
Oh.
Great, wait.
North High.
Uh so it in favor of the project?
Yeah, all the comments look like it's for Fifth Avenue, so it doesn't look like anyone's here for this project.
Hello. Hello.
Hi.
Hi, man. Thank you for stopping me. I'm uh, my name is Ray. I'm a resident of North High Street. And um I would like to comment on the project that's being presented before us in regards to North High.
Are you in favor or opposed?
We are opposed. Last Saturday, we had a meeting in the neighborhood, and we're we're completely opposed. For starters, there's the house right in front of that lot, which that beautiful picture isn't showing. Uh that which there's a squatter issue in that, and and I don't know if the Jets mentioned that to you, but we call the police all the time on that particular property there. And we just have a lot of concerns in regards to the residents that would be coming in. One, it's mixed. It's being mixed with residency and being mixed for public business use. And that's something that concerns us.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um so I noted, I I can hear you clearly. Can you state your full name and your address again? Please, for the record?
Uh do I have to give my address?
And you have to give your full name, yes.
Okay. Manny Burgos, and we are residents here at three three eight North High Street.
Three three eight North High?
Yep.
And you said your name is? I'm sorry. Oh my goodness, why does that every time you say your name, I can't hear? Say it again, please.
Sammy Virgo.
Okay, Sammy Virgo?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Um so you're opposed to the project because of the mixed use. Continue, please.
We are opposed to the project with the misuse. Uh we are aware that there is a squatter issue in front of that house, particularly at this precise moment in time. Uh and.
Slow down. Let's address one issue at a time. You said that there's squatter issues? What what are squatter issues?
Well, a squ- you know, a squatter is a person who is on the property. Uh not, they don't belong there, they don't pay rent, they don't live there technically.
So they're loitering. They're not living there. They're loitering.
They're living there. It's called a squatter.
Oh, they're living there. That's my question. Are they living there or are they hanging out in front of the property?
No, they're living there.
Is it? So the property is being used illegally as a residential building or or can you give us more context?
It's being used illegally as a residential. There are numerous 311 calls into the department in regards to it from all the neighborhood. Hello, I'm cutting off. You guys hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we hear you loud and clear.
I'm sorry. Yeah, and uh and again, uh one of our major concerns, I don't know if anybody could address it here. And I was talking about earlier, it's the mixed use that we think is gonna impact our neighborhood. Our taxes are high as is already, and it's a very nice neighborhood. Uh this mixed use, how is that going to affect us? Uh we don't believe it's gonna affect us in a positive way. And that's another reason why we are opposed to this property.
Okay, uh so you're.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you very much for hearing me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh thank you for uh making the comments. Anyone else um would like to be heard regarding three forty one North High Street?
Mr. Judge or Judges is raised their hand, but they won't say what property um they wanna comment on, but I'll I'll promote just to check.
Okay.
Anywhere.
Mr. Judge, can you hear us?
I'm judge.
It's on mute. Oh, it's on mute. You're you're muted. So can you unmute yourself? Okay, so we're we're not sure if the person is there or not, because I don't see video and I can't hear. All right, so we're we're gonna continue to move on. Anyone else? Let's see. I don't see. I don't see anyone else. Uh this is the board members. Do we have any questions?
Well, I'm curious.
I just got interrupted. I wanna go back to my question regarding.
I'm still curious about uh about the other property that the gentleman from the public claims that there's uh that we're not seeing on these blueprints. I'm I'm interested in knowing a bit more about that and why that may have been omitted.
Uh it it hasn't been omitted. So it's either this one or this one. Uh I'm not so sure which one it is. I think it's or or maybe across the street. Uh that's all.
He said it was directly across the street from.
Okay, so then so then it's it's uh it's where my pointer is.
Oh, we don't. I don't see your screen. I'm trying to go to my blueprints.
Can you share the screen with us?
Sure. Let me go back. I thought it was shared already. Let me see. Share screen. This is the sideline here. So can you see it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it three thirty, this is uh three forty one, so it's the odd numbers. Across the street are the even numbers. Three thirty eight should be around here where my pointer is. Uh so uh you know, we're not admitting anything. We just we 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 were presenting almost every property around the structure. And let me see if we have it on this picture here.
And while you're doing that, can you just tell me why it's going to be mixed use versus maybe becoming all residential?
Well, really, this idea evolved, we started with by using by proposing just strictly uh residential use. And when we went to the work session with the city council, they themselves proposed it, or at least one member of the city council said, well, why don't you provide uh in on the on the lower level uh some loft spaces and let the the spaces above on the uh you know, uh and and let them work in in concert with the with the residential uses above. And we thought that's a good idea uh because we already have some kind of a commercial use being utilized down and and with the certificate of occupancy. Uh so we we thought we can we we can go ahead with that and but it's not something that the client uh you know, originally went for, uh so.
So is the is the client uh requiring that he have this mixed use property or is he?
Uh no, he's not. He's not. No, he's not requiring. It's a good idea. He would love that idea, but he's, you know, he can he can uh a lot, he he can go ahead with just strictly residential.
I believe the council uh felt that this was a desired um uh idea, mixed use uh considering the cost of uh uh living and and um and commercial, so that um there was a couple of people in the council that thought the idea of having the mixed use was something that they would be in more favor of. So I believe that's where.
Right.
Did the council have ideas already or was? Did the council have ideas already or was this just something they were thinking about? Did they actually have?
No, I think that they had their consensus based on their exchange with the public.
Again, we're not married to the idea of the mixed use. We can, we can, you know, we can just with the, yeah, we can make adjustments. We can stick with the residential only.
So if you stuck with residential only and maintain the same amount of square footage, that would obviously yield more residential units. Do you have a plan to address the parking deficiency then?
Well, okay, we're not these are the apartments here. They're gonna, they're gonna stay, we're not changing the number of units. That will remain. That's the intent. The original intent was 10 units and we're still proposing 10 units. Now, as far as the parking, we have this court area here. We're proposing seven parking spaces with a handicapped aisle, which didn't exist prior to now, and then posing interior six spaces, interior. So 13 spaces for 10 units. This is what we're proposing, which is 1.3 parking spaces per unit. I, I think it's more than what's been permissible lately with with the general thinking that, that 1.1 parking spaces per unit are what's universally accepted lately. So I think we have ample number of parking spaces in relationship to the residential units. Again, we're not increasing the number of units. We're not increasing the area of the units. That was the original intent. What we added onto the project are the lots, which were desired by some members of the city council.
Okay. Niketchi, I don't see you. I don't know if you're still there. I don't know why I can't see everybody. There you are. Okay. So we don't, we don't, does the board, do the members have any more questions? I think we should move on. Since we there's a few more steps before we have to go, before any changes even can be made or any decisions can be made. So we'd like to move on to the next two, two projects. Niketchi, should I accept a motion now to, for lead agency and continue the secret process? Or should we wait until here all, all, all three cases, all three projects? You're on mute.
I think we can take each project in turn. I did hear what Assistant Court Counsel Lockett mentioned. We're unsure of the city council's desire to retain jurisdiction or what they're going to do. It might be advisable to wait and see what they say. However, as was mentioned, the zoning board could also go ahead and declare its intent to serve as lead agency. The city council will be interested or involved.
I think I want, I want that in writing. I don't know what the other board members want. I think it's important that that is in writing, even though because otherwise there's some, how do we respond? How do we follow up? If it's written and it's a letter, then there is a paper trail and response in the conversation rather than just waiting.
I agree. I like the idea that was presented to us by Jack about submitting the letter to the city council. I think that we should expedite these things, you know? I don't really want these people to have to sit here and wait and wait while we lob back and forth.
So the board can go ahead and vote to declare its intent to serve as lead agency and notices will be sent out and you'll receive feedback from other cities. City council wants to take over that role. They'll mention that in writing.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go. So let's go with the motion to declare zoning board's lead agency regarding this project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe Commissioner Solly is on the line too. There he is there. So we have a larger quorum, yes.
Do I presume that the public hearing is gonna remain open or are you closing that public hearing?
Remaining open.
Okay.
Later. Heard that.
Huh?
We're here. Let's keep going.
All right, so we're moving on. I just was surprised on the, I'm looking at Solly. Solly, I don't see you, but I see your name. All right, so we're moving on to 3.3 calendar number 1751Z, 65 West Second Street.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Castillo, just a bit of forgive me, the motion to serve as lead
The motion has been
was made by and seconded by.
The motion was made by Commissioner Cutler and it was seconded by Commissioner Darden. And am I supposed to accept the motion?
Okay, and it was, and it was voted. So if you'd like to vote to adjourn the matter?
Mm-hmm, we adjourn the matter.
Excuse me, excuse me. I don't know if we have Commissioner we have Commissioner Solly's vote on record.
I can't hear him. Is he on?
Solly, you need to unmute. He's on. I see him. But I just want to make sure that we've captured all the votes.
I see him on, I see his name. I don't see him or I don't, and I don't hear him.
Can the administrator unmute him?
He has to unmute himself. All right, we, we're Commissioner Molina, are you on?
Yes.
Uh, is Solly, Solly there? And, and do you need to unmute him or does he need to unmute himself?
He need, so he needs to unmute himself because he's, he's a full panelist, so.
All right, so we'll wait till he unmute. I mean, we're not gonna wait for him to unmute himself to continue in the meeting as we are in a quorum. So Solly, you can chime in when you're because we can't hear you right now.
So the board, you can also vote to adjourn this matter and then move on to the next item.
So.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this matter on North High Street and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Any second? Is anyone seconding the motion? I second the motion. Can I second the motion as a chair? We're moving on.
I'm seconding it. I'm sorry, I have my phone.
I couldn't hear you.
I don't know, I was on mute. But are we adjourning only until Commissioner Solly can participate?
No, the matter is adjourned for the evening. We're gonna declare to be the lead agency and move on.
Okay, thank you.
So back to 65 West Second Street.
All right.
1751Z. Let me read it onto the, on the calendar. The applicant Prestise Railtors, represented by Tom Abalama, seeks to construct an eight-town home in a zone where the maximum number of dwelling units is three. And you need to use, use an area variance is requested. Use and area variance are requested. And we still have the secret process on this as well, unlisted. Continue, Mr. Abalama.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom Abalama, architect for the applicant. So this application is situated on can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, please bear with me. It's situated on the corner of West Second Street and South Eighth Avenue. To the left would be the Macedonia building and and I can show you the, the neighborhood. There's Macedonia here and this, the middle picture is the, the view of the property, where there's, it's a vacant property. And, and those are the, all the neighboring properties here. So what we're proposing to have is this project is pretty slow, so is to propose to have eight attached dwelling units. In the past, an application like this wouldn't require a use variance, but then after an interpretation by the zoning board a couple of years ago, they deemed another application to to, to make such an application not to be allowed to have more than three dwelling units attached. So that's why it's called a use variance. And then the if you can see here, I don't know if you can see clearly, variances. But let me go to can you see this table?
We can see the table, but the writing is very small, but you can kind of walk us through it. There, that's better.
I got the previous one, sorry. So this one here. So we're requesting, I'm gonna go over with the, the variances that are requested. As far as the lot coverage, there's a maximum permitted of 40%. We're proposing 52%. And as far as the impervious surfaces, maximum required 70%. We're proposing 80%. As far as the lot area per dwelling, what's required is 2,250 square feet and we're proposing to have 1,646 square feet. The front yard as, as permitted to be 20 feet and we're proposing four feet. And the side yards, five and 12 feet, proposing two feet each. And the other front yard, the secondary front yard, in lieu of being 15 feet, we're proposing two feet. And the rear yard setback, in lieu of being 20 feet, we're proposing 14.75 feet. Number of parking spaces, we have posing 16 units as required. Although eight of the 16 are undersized parking spaces. Let me go back to the project. So so we go back to the site plan and we have these front five units and the rear three units with a common area with a gazebo or play area for the children. And can see here, this is the first floor level with two parking spaces in the back and a family room front with a full bath. On the second floor, we have living dining kitchen. And then on the third floor, we have, we're proposing to have three bedrooms with two baths. And that's the way the, the outdoor, the exterior elevation looks like. This is the rear. And these are the side elevations of Eighth Avenue. And these are the elevations for the three-unit cluster. And that's the gazebo we're, we're proposing. So having said that, if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer. And if Jack can say a few words, please go ahead.
Jack, you're on mute.
I'll, I'll wait until you have some questions. I think you've laid it out pretty, pretty good. The issue here is the number of attached units that are allowed in the zone. The zone doesn't allow more than three attached units. And we have five in one, one building complex and three in the other, so that's really the main issue. And, and the others, the other issues are, you know, not that major. But we'll wait till we have some questions and we'll be happy to respond.
Any board members have questions?
Would it have been difficult to make the structures attached at the certain, at certain benchmarks?
I'm sorry, what?
Would it have, because we're talking about the, the issue is the attachments. Would it, would it have been possible to have separated these structures and still have kept the overall appearance or structure?
It would have lost units. They wouldn't have had enough units.
Okay.
Well, everything is possible, except that once you separate, you'd have to provide some distance in between. And that will minimize the size of the unit.
The space, the available space for units.
Yeah.
Okay. Cutler, Commissioner Cutler, do you have any questions?
I think everything is
Clear.
Clear in the drawings and the presentation. And is there a determination on the lead agency for this or are there any stuff?
We're gonna go through the same motion as on the previous case. I do wanna open it up to the public if there's anyone, any member of the public. And for the sake, because we're in a Zoom meeting, I think I have to just state in favor or in opposition of this case. If you have any comments and you're there now, please raise your hand so that you can be let in in the meeting. And this is 65 West Second Street. Commissioner Molina, are you there?
I'm here. I had to stop sharing the screen so I could see what.
Okay. The public wish to speak regarding this project, 65 West Second Street. Please raise your hand so you could be let in. Commissioner Solly, I see that you're still there. I don't know if you have any questions. I think Solly, he, he has his hands raised, but I don't hear him. Do you see anyone else? No.
No, I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on. You know, I'll accept, we'll keep this meeting open and I'll accept the motion for the intent to be lead agency.
I'll second that. All right, I'll make a motion to make the zoning board lead agency on this project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will leave this meeting open and I'll also accept the motion that we adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn to the next item on the agenda. And I think we can dismiss Mr. Dessau and Mr. Abalama. You guys have no other projects this evening?
Yeah, Mr. Dessau has another one, 4.1.
I believe I have 417.
Oh, okay. Mr. Abalama, do you have anything else on the agenda this evening?
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Have a good evening.
All right. Niketchi, how are we doing? What did we miss before we move on to 4.1? Everything good?
That's fine. If you just wanted to, I think Commissioner Cutler moved to adjourn the item. Was there a second of the vote?
Ms. Darden, do you wanna, yes, she was.
We're making a motion to adjourn and move on to the next item.
Second.
Motion, thank you.
And the vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, the meeting has been adjourned. Now we're moving on to item four point one, calendar seventeen fifty-two Z, four seventeen South Fifth Avenue. And the applicant, four seventeen South Fifth Avenue LLC, Rashawn Judge, I believe the applicant was on the line also represented by Jack Adesso, seeks to construct a new four-story sixteen-unit building in a zone where the maximum number of the dwelling units is three. Area variances are requested. And we also intend to be the lead agency on this project, so Mr. Adesso.
I believe the the architect Shane Bedali is is also on. Is that correct?
Let me check.
I'm promoting him to Palace. He'll be there shortly.
Hello, this is Shane Bedali.
Hello, how are you?
Shaheen, this is Jack. Could you go through your presentation on the, on the site and the plans?
Yes, definitely. Should I share my screen?
Yes.
One second, please. Okay, is it visible?
Yes.
Yeah, we can.
All right, so we have before you the project at four seventeen South Fifth. It's a proposed sixteen-unit apartment building. It's located between Fifth Street and Sanford Boulevard. I believe most people should be familiar with the site. This is a redesign from the previous submission that we had in that we have added a floor to the building. Partially, it's a half a story. And we have also expanded on some of the apartments, so we have more three-bedroom apartments than we previously did. The building layout has eighteen parking spaces on the first floor with a studio and a one-bedroom. There's three, three bedrooms on the second, third, and fourth floor and one two-bedroom. The fourth floor is different from the second and third in that there's a setback in the front for two balconies. Those are located here and here. And on the roof, we don't have a structure in the front, so it should provide hopefully less of an impact on the street. But we do have two, two-bedroom units in the back of that, and then an open roof rec area space as well as a community room in the front. In terms of the variances that we're requesting, I've highlighted them in red here on the zoning compliance table. The permitted height in this zone is three stories, and we're asking for five. The permitted building height is thirty-five, and we're at fifty-two and a half. The permitted lot coverage is forty percent. For the building, we do have forty-three percent. That's in order to provide that breakup in the front and a little bit of relief in the facade. The lot coverage is at eighty-eight percent due to the parking lot that we do need to service the building. The lot area per dwelling unit, rather than two thousand two hundred and fifty, has been reduced to six hundred and fifty-six. Now that's the increase in density for the units. And then the parking requirement, rather than the two per dwelling unit thirty-two spaces, we've provided eighteen. So so that's the project that we have before you. And I just want to mention that on the elevation, there's unfortunately a line that didn't print here, but there is an awning above the front door.
Shaheen, could you describe what zone this is in?
Sure. So this is in an RMF six point seven-five zone. So the zoning map is before you right here. We're just adjacent to a commercial which is Sanford Boulevard. I've also provided a map that shows the different land uses in the area, so the yellow would be all of the residential uses. The blue here would be the school next door to us. We're currently a commercial slash industrial use as the current certificate of occupancy for the building is an office and I believe auto repair in a parking lot, something to that effect. There is currently a one-story building as well as parking and storage on site.
Could you identify what the red indicates on that map?
Sure. So the the red is all of the commercial uses that are around the site. So we have some commercial over here by Sanford as well as a couple of auto repair and gas stations at the corner of Fifth and Fifth. I'm unfamiliar with this exact use here.
So so there's mixed uses in the area?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So if there are any questions, we can address those questions.
Can you identify, just so it's clear on the map, where the school is located?
Sure. So on the Google map, which is here, the school is this building right here, so that's between Fifth and Sanford on South Fifth Avenue. And on the the land use map, it's right here, this big blue, and then and then o- over here on the zoning map, across the street from our location.
Any other board members have questions?
Later, I know that there's a lot of people in queue from the public, so if it's appropriate, I mean that we can open it up to those
There is no board member has, okay, does, does, where is Let me see. No other board member, I don't see.
Any questions? I don't have any questions. I am, I am giving my time, yielding my time to the public because there are so many people interested in speaking about this matter.
Commissioner Melina?
Yeah, one second. Yes, I'm actually promoting adding this Ali to a commissioner. Hopefully he's, the audio issue has been resolved.
Okay, Sully, you had your hands raised. Is your audio good? Okay. Any members of the public, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand so that Commissioner Melina can promote you over to the meeting and you have an opportunity to speak. Commissioner Sully, I think you unmuted yourself now. Are you able to speak? No, not resolved.
Try holding down the spacebar if you need to say something.
Yeah, that's if he's in a computer, right? Not on his phone.
That's true.
Um, all right, so we have I see John Stan.
Yes.
Can you hear me? And unmute yourself so we can hear you. If you have any comments regarding four seventeen South Fifth Avenue.
So he just, I think he just stamped or just lost connection because he's gone.
Moving on to the next person. All right, we see the hands raised.
Camille's coming up.
Camille, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Please state your full name and address.
Full name is Camille Danqua. Address is four two two South Fourth Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York.
And are you in favor or in opposition to this project?
I am in opposition.
Okay, please state your reasons.
So I recently just bought the house that abuts uh, four seventeen South Fifth. I I I'm highly concerned because, not for nothing, I just moved from the city of New York during the midst of COVID i- in hopes of giving my autistic son a better lifestyle. So to now be in a position where we're possibly going to have a building that's going to overshadow the yard and everything that we've sat here and ran away from is very concerning to me. You know, I I see what the, what the development is putting out there as far as there is mixed uses in the neighborhood, but none of those mixed uses are in the middle of the residential blocks themselves. They are all spread out at to the corners. So that within the blocks themselves, we're not having some of those issues or concerns of the noise that, not for nothing, a four-story, well, five-story building is going to bring. Yeah, I I I'm just, I don't know, I'm just very highly concerned. How does that stick with what the neighborhood is presenting? What about the health and and welfare of those who are already here? And what timeline this construction will take?
So you're opposing the project because you will not, you will have
I feel
There's a shadow.
Yes, I I I'm, the the infringement on, on the ability for fresh air and health and safety of my child who does not have the ability to know, you know, God forbid, anything falls off while they're building. He doesn't have that awareness to know not to be in the backyard. Now we have to bar him from that ability of what we just ran away from the city from.
So you're at four twenty-two South Fourth, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
And your backyard is facing
Touches their backyard.
Touches their backyard. Okay. All right, and you are also, you're objecting to, you wanna know the length of the construction. So are you, is there anything that can in other words, if the applicant can satisfy your objection on the the shadow or the blocking of your view, because you're saying the yards are back to back. Your only other objection is the length of construction? Is that correct?
The length of construction and I I guess the safety for my property at this point. Just, you know, I I get that my concern, it might be different from a lot of the rest of the neighborhood, but my autistic son is is my major concern.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We're gonna hear more comments of residents that are waiting, and then we're gonna have Jack Adesso and and the architect address them. I know that they're taking notes as we speak. Thank you, Camille. For your time today.
Thank you.
Okay, Randolph, you're on. Can you hear us? You have to unmute yourself. There is a microphone to the left of your screen.
Just got it now, thank you.
There you go. Please state your name and your full address, and if you're in favor or in opposition to this project.
My name is Doris Randolph, four twenty-four South Fifth Avenue. I object to the building of this project because we don't need apartment building in a residential area. That's too many, too many families in the one area. And why apartment building? All those two on the corner, we don't have one in the middle of the residential area. We don't need it here like that. If he was going to build a two-family house or something like that, it would be appropriate. But not no apartment building.
Okay.
Middle of a block.
So your objection is because it's in the middle of the block, you think it does not?
It does not belong. It is overcrowding. It's overcrowding to put a bunch of people in in the area. Let him look for someplace else.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to comment on this project today. Again, we're gonna move on to the next resident and their comments, and then we'll have Adesso respond to the comments. Commissioner Melina?
So Nathaniel, Nathaniel's coming up next.
Okay. Nathaniel, can you hear us?
Yes, it's it's the wife.
Hi, Mrs. Davis.
Yes, hi, I'm Sabrina.
How are you? Thank you for taking the time today. Can you please state your full name, address, and if you are in favor or in opposition to this project?
Okay, my name is Sabrina Davis. I live at four eighteen South Fifth Avenue. And I am definitely opposed of that. Directly, a big old building, I moved from the city away from the big old buildings and to come here, I mean, we have two buildings on the corners, but that's okay, but directly in front of me. No, and that's gonna bring a lot of people over here in the evening by eight o'clock. There's nobody on our street. It's very quiet. So imagine bringing sixteen apartments and then three bedrooms. That's a lot of people. You know how much noise it's gonna bring? Our quality of life gonna be diminished from all that noise and stuff like that. And when he says some gas stations on the corner, that is not true. It is a lot. This is a parking lot, is a car lot where they fix cars. And other lot, I think these people are horn, what you call them, squatters? Because I don't, because every time I turn around, there's a four cell sign up on top of it. So there's no gas station on the corner of South Fifth Avenue, so that is not true.
Wrap up in the next ten minutes.
This is all housings, you know, housings, not no apartment building.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. David, Davis. So your objection is that it's it's crowded and it's too big and
Noise, everything.
Okay.
There's too much in the middle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to comment. Anyone else, Commissioner Melina?
Yes, Don Walker's coming.
Okay. Mr. Walker, Don Walker, can you hear us? You have to unmute yourself. There is a mic to the left of your screen if you can unmute yourself. Commissioner Melina, can we go on to the next one while Don Walker can unmute himself? If we have any more waiting. Okay, okay, okay. Oh, hi, hi, hi.
Yes, I live at four twenty-two South Fifth Avenue from nineteen ninety-one, January moved here. About a Sony block is very, very quiet. We are neighbors right here. Now, can you imagine you going to bring a sixteen family unit next door to us? That sixteen family unit is gonna go on a probably fifty odd people gonna live there. We don't even have place to park our car right now. All kind of different people is gonna come there. It is gonna be just too crowded. And I don't want to to move from where I'm living. So we don't entertain the type of a building in front of us or in the block for that matter.
Mr. Walker, you you said your address was four twenty-two South Fifth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you're named Don Walker and you're opposing the project because it'll increase parking? Or you won't have an ability to park? Is that your complaint? Okay. Okay. Thank you for taking the time to comment today. Commissioner Melina, do we have anyone else?
Yes, Richard Puentes, and then there are three questions that I'd like to read out loud.
Okay. After you read those three questions, does that, does that conclude the comments for today so that we can give it to Mr. Adesso to respond?
Yes, so far.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Richard Puentes, and then three other questions.
Right, right, okay. Richard Puentes, can you state your full name and your address, please?
No problem. My name is Richard Puentes. I live at four twenty South Fifth Avenue.
Okay, are you in favor or in opposition?
I'm in opposition to the project.
Okay, state why.
One, raising taxes. Two, we don't really have enough information about what type of housing this building is gonna provide. Three families around this neighborhood. They can change the rental market around here. I have an investment property here where I rent apartments, so that could affect the rental income there and also parking, and I concur with all the concerns that my neighbors have as well.
So you you live at four twenty-five or you rent the property at four twenty-five? Both? Okay, so your concern is property value taxes?
Potential rental income, future
Rental rental income.
And parking as well.
And parking. Okay, thank you for taking the time to to comment today. We will move on to Commissioner Melina. You have three questions you'd like to read on, and we've been taking notes, and we're gonna have uh, Jack Adesso and perhaps the architect comments and respond to all the residents.
Yes, the first question is, what type of housing will, will this building provide? Will it be, will it be low-income housing? Will the project take away the already scarce parking spots? And will this project cause an increase in taxes for the community?
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Malina. We're gonna, uh, Adesso, if you, uh, would you like to address some of these comments made by the residents? Um, you've taken notes, I don't know, you, would you like me to read into?
No, I got, I think I have, I have the notes of each person, and I do have the questions.
Okay.
Um, Camille, uh, Denkwa's, uh, questions are, uh, something I think we could, uh, help her with. Uh, Shaheen, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Uh, perhaps we can do a shadow study.
Sure, definitely.
And, and, uh, come back and indicate what the, uh, impact of the building would be uh, shadow-wise on the properties around it. You know, at the various times of the year, various times of the day. I think that would be helpful to the people living there, uh, especially to, uh, Ms., uh, Denkwa, and, um, I think it's something that we can provide for them. So uh, I think we will be able to provide you at our next meeting with a shadow study. And I think that'll do something towards, uh, alleviating certain concerns. Some of the questions are, are pretty, uh, similar. Uh, everybody's concerned about the building being located in the middle of the block in, uh, in an RMF six zone, which is, uh, basically a multi-family, three-family zone. And, you know, there's, there's nothing about the location on, on a block that would impact the building, other than uh, the height of the building, uh, and the footprint of the building. This building is approximately fifty, fifty-two feet in height. The zone allows a building that's thirty-five feet in height, uh, and in the area, there are certain buildings that are higher than that. So we're talking about a, a difference of approximately twenty feet, uh, in height. Uh, and, uh, we don't believe that that is a significant enough impact height-wise, and we don't believe that it will impact the shadowing uh, in, in a negative way, and I think we'll be able to show that. Uh, as far as the, um, uh, the taxes, uh, this building would not increase taxes. This building would help keep taxes low because it would take this property, which for all intents and purposes is off the tax rolls, and put it on the tax rolls. So there would be taxes raised by the construction of this building. Uh, and those taxes would help reduce the tax basis for all the other residents in the city. Uh, the type of, uh, housing this is, it's not low-income, it's, it's not affordable, it's market-rate housing. Uh, the intent is to have people come into, uh, the, the, the building, uh, that will be able to pay market rent. We're not asking for any subsidies, uh, from the city of Mount Vernon, uh, nor are we asking for any subsidies from anyone else. This is a market-rate project which will stand on its own, and, uh, we're sure that it will not negatively impact the rents. It'll probably positively impact the rents because it's, uh, probably an ups, an, an uptick in, in rental income as opposed to a downtick in, in rental income.
What's the proposed rent for the three-bedroom? Do you know that at this time?
Alonso, are you there? Alonso?
I don't see. Him on, okay, well, we can.
Okay, uh, well, the market is what will bear. I mean, it's a market-rate building.
Yeah.
Uh, so three-family houses, whatever the market
Understood.
in the county and, and in the area, that's what, that's what the rents will be. They're not affordable, they're not low-income, they're not based on the income of people coming.
Excuse me, I, I just want to mention that Alonso mentioned to me right now that the, that would be two thousand five hundred dollars at a market rate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so that would be, uh, what the income level would be. Um, and, uh, we don't believe that that's gonna impact the rents in the area negatively. Uh, it, it'll probably help, uh, bring the rentals up. Um, insofar, insofar as the, uh, the parking, well, you know, this building has eighteen spaces. Uh, according to the code, it's supposed to have thirty spaces or thirty-two spaces. Uh, but it's in an area where you're, you're close enough to mass transit uh, that, that people aren't gonna need a lot of cars. Uh, and we believe that the parking that's provided in the building, uh, off-site, off-street, I mean, uh, i- is adequate parking. Uh, the, obviously, there will be times when it may impact some of the street parking. Uh, so, I mean, that's, that's something that's gonna happen anyway. Even if you put a two-family house or a three-family house, and it is a possibility, you'd impact, uh, a, a street property.
It's also currently a commercial use.
Right, which is the other thing. What, what you have there is a property that could be used commercially. Uh, you know, right now, you know it's there. Tomorrow, it could be a different commercial use. It could be a more onerous commercial use, uh, you know, right in the middle of your nice residential neighborhood. Uh, we, we believe that this, this is a much better use, uh, for the community and the area.
Wha- what about the overall aesthetic as many of the residents who are in opposition are concerned about the aesthetic of houses versus now, uh, a multi, uh, family building, apartment building?
Well, I think, um, Shaheen, you want to address that as, as, as it deals with the, uh, the design and the color of the building and, and what you've done to minimize that impact?
Definitely. So, uh, first of all, I, I'd like to mention that in, in terms of the aesthetic, we do plan on fully going through an architectural review board approval and getting a certificate of appropriateness, uh, for the design. Uh, second of all, we've provided a facade that, um, hopefully is not too displeasing to the eye. We're, we're very amenable to providing a nice building. And we've also set back the building in multiple levels, first at the fourth-floor balconies and then at the roof level in order to provide, you know, hopefully a better sky exposure plane and more light and air down at the street. Um.
Well, the other thing the building does, I mean, the, the, the top floor, uh, as Shaheen mentioned in his presentation, has a roof deck. Um, which is an open area where, you know, the residents in the building can, can come out and, and sit and, and relax. Uh, and the basement of the building is gonna have a gymnasium or a gym. Uh, which again is, is something that would benefit the, uh, the residents in the building. So i- it's an upscale building with some upscale amenities, uh, and, and we believe that, uh, with the aesthetics that Shaheen has basically described. And the fact that the architecture review board is gonna review this i- is gonna look at the colors, the setbacks of the, of the building itself, uh, you know, and all those other things. Uh, we believe that the finished product will ultimately be, uh, something that's very appealing, uh, and.
I do have a three-D rendering here if you'd like to.
Or would you put it up? That'd be very helpful.
I'd also like to mention that the building will have a doorman. I believe I'm currently sharing. Let me know if, uh, there's any issues. And that, that, you know, so essentially that we plan on having, uh, somebody on site twenty-four hours for the property.
Okay, let's see.
So I, I think, you know, that the, we still have to go to the planning board for site plan review. Um, so, you know, this is the first step along the way, uh, but there'll be other boards reviewing this, and hopefully um, the, the, the project will have, you know, uh, a design and a, uh, an impact uh, that is acceptable in the community, uh, and, and will be a positive influence rather than a negative influence.
Okay, uh, the, so you addressed the parking issue.
I just have a question regarding the design as indicated in the rendering. What is the setback of the building from the sidewalk to the, where the, uh, building starts? How big is that lawn that's shown there?
Um, let me tell you right now, it is. Uh, it, it's twenty feet, so it's just the front yard setback is conforming. Uh, let me pull up the site plan. Um, all right, so, so the front portion of the building here where the entrance is, is at twenty feet, and then where those balconies are and the other setbacks are a little further back than that, so maybe about, you know, twenty-two to twenty-five feet.
Shaheen, what? Is there, is there any space that some public space can be created out of there for the neighbors to use as well in the front of the building or elsewhere, or is that not feasible?
Well, we have, as shown on the site plan, we have some big old planters in front of the building, hopefully to provide some nice plantings, and then a grassed area in front of that and a couple of walkways. Um, there's, you know, the site is kind of tight. I mean, uh, I, I'm not sure if you had something in mind specifically.
I didn't know what was feasible, but if, uh, it's gonna be well landscaped, I think that that should have just been the concerns of the neighbors.
Shaheen, what's the distance of the rear of the building from the, from the rear property line?
Pull that up as well. So that as well is, uh, is conforming, and we currently have a twenty-five-foot setback in that a twenty-foot is required.
Right, so we, we exceed the required setback by five feet. We have twenty-five feet when we are required to have twenty. Okay. Correct?
That, that is correct. Also, um, the side yards are also, uh, greater than required. The minimum single side yard is seven feet. We have proposed twelve on each side for a total of twenty-four versus the eighteen required.
Right, so.
So we, we're, we're, uh, I, I was just also going through the variances. Basically, it is, uh, you're required five area variances and, uh, one use variance, is that correct?
Well, well, the use variance, the use variance, um, uh, is not really a use variance. I mean, because this is a residential use in a residential zone. Uh, the aspect of it is in the six-point-seven-five zone. They only talk about three families per unit. Okay, so that's what, that's what creates that use variance issue. Uh, but the reuse of the property is a residential use, whereas opposed to the current use, which is a commercial use, which would certainly be a non-conforming use in this residential district. So we're going from a non-conforming use to a conforming use, although it's greater than three units per dwelling, per building. Okay, so in that respect, yes, i- it's, i- it's a use change, but i- it's not a use change in the actual use of the property, which is residential.
Um, okay, so the.
And multifamily.
And multifamily, yes.
The density aspect of it changes also the, uh.
Would it be possible, rather than, than having a fifty-foot-tall building, to include some of the parking below the surface and thus reduce just one story?
Yeah, we lost you, uh, Cutler.
My question was, uh, to the engineer, Mister Badali, uh, would it be possible to reduce the height of the building from the fifty feet that's proposed, uh, and move some of the park into underground, uh, lessened height? Is that feasible?
Yes, I, I think I got the question. A couple of things to note on the, on the fifty feet also, just to, 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 to mention. First of all, the building was originally proposed as four-story. Uh, we do not, we're, we're not necessarily uh, committed to the five-story if it's a huge issue. The reason for it was that we were advised to provide a tenant amenity space on the rooftop. And in order to provide that and have a usable building, uh, we, we enclosed the rear part of the building and, and added two units. Uh, really what we did is we didn't add any units to the original design, but we made the lower units bigger and use that new rooftop space to move some units upstairs. Um, it's, it's not out of the question that the building could work as four stories in a sixteen-unit and uh, not have underground parking. Now, in terms of your question, yes, it is possible to provide underground parking, however, the cost of construction, uh, may make the project infeasible if we have to provide a ramp that goes down to a lower-level parking. It will also be a much larger structure at the base than currently proposed because there'll be, you know, ramp going down underground versus an open space.
Mm-hmm.
I understand that, and I like the aspect of the recreation space on the roof, so thank you for explaining that in detail.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, uh, I think we wanna, I wanna thank, uh, thank you, uh, Mister Odessa and the architect, and also the, uh, residents for commenting tonight. Uh, we wanna keep, uh, this application open, and, um, I wanna accept the motion to request we're the lead agency. Um.
I'll make a motion to nominate the zone running board as lead.
Second. Uh, we go for a vote. All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Um, we have got this motion. Um, Ja- Mister Odessa, do you have any more questions? Um, I don't see, Neketchi, Neketchi, do you have any questions? Am I missing anything?
I'm here. There are just a couple of comments from the public in ch- in chats.
Uh, there was three questions last time we read. Any other com- what, what are the last comments? I can't see.
When would this project start? And what is the estimated time to build? That's from Richard Puentes.
Okay.
I could answer those questions, Jack, if you like.
Go ahead, Shaheen.
So I, I wrote down a couple of notes. Uh, typically, the time of construction for a building of this size would be around twelve months. Uh, but we, we would say twelve to eighteen months to be safe, but it, it should be completed within twelve months. Um, I also want to mention that the shadow study will, will be accompanied with an updated rendering that more accurately reflects the architectural plans. Um, so, and, and I also want to, uh, note that the uh, person who commented on the gas station was correct. I went and checked. It is not a gas station at the corner. It seems to be some sort of place where they're storing vehicles, and maybe at one time was an auto repair or something to the effect. Um, so, so, please, just to clarify the record. Um, and then that, uh, Jack mentioned that it was market rate and that there's no tax abatement or pilot proposed, and therefore should hopefully not affect any of the neighbors' taxes. So, thank you.
Okay, and that was, uh, any more comments, Neketchi, that you could see?
The last comment I see is from Elsa. Parking is already tight, and if you add eighteen spaces, people who have two cars will have to park out on the street. The balconies will be overlooking people's homes. Benefits the residents in the building, not the residents next door. Those are the only comments and questions I see.
Um, okay, um, thank you. I, I just want to let the members of the public know that, um, we're not deciding on this project today. We are, we are, we have documented all of your comments and all will be taken into consideration. Um, I do have one question actually before we, uh, close tonight's meeting is the, um, will, will there be any secondary development after this, this project in the, in the neighborhood? Will, will it cause uh, anything else to be built in the area after this structure goes up? I guess this would be for the architect, maybe?
Well, just to clarify, I think more specifically, uh, possibly where the question is directed is that there was a tentative development at four oh five South Fifth, South Fifth, which had been the corner of Fifth and Fifth. It's an abandoned two-family house. That proposal has gone away. That owner is proposing a set of two, two-family houses, which are as of right and within the density that is permitted. The project will be going before the architectural review board, and it'll be before the planning board for a subdivision. Uh, but, uh, in, in terms of that site, uh, that, that would be out of the question as it stands. Uh, I can't speak for any other sites, but I don't know of any other large lots around, or on South Fifth, I should say, within those blocks.
Normally, uh, when, when approving a project that is not intended, you would think that, you know, other developers will say, oh, you know what, it's okay for us to, uh, build a project this size, um, in the area. Um. So that was just my question. I didn't know if there was anything else um in the area that was being planned for.
Yeah, I I don't know of any other sites that are on on South Fifth specifically. Um, but there are other proposals by many other architects that I'm not involved in that are, you know, only a few blocks away.
Right, right. Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. uh, Niketchi and Ms. Lockett, do you have anything else you want to add to tonight's meeting?
If you'd like to vote to adjourn this item?
Yes. Uh, I will. All those in favor of adjourning this item in this meeting? Can I do that all at the same time?
Well, let me, let me just make sure I'm noting who in seconds.
Okay.
I'll second, but I was going to just put the motion out there that we should adjourn.
Yes.
I second that.
Thank you.
Mr. Odessa, thank you. I appreciate you.
You guys, thank you all. Thank you all for listening. And stay safe.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Uh, we've uh, considered this meeting adjourned.
That's, that was adjourning item four point one.
Oh, sorry, okay. So I'll accept the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Well, we'll get the hang of this soon enough. Uh, thank you, everybody. Stay safe. Mr. Odessa, it was good to see you. You look like you're like, you know, you should be in a movie with that background back there. Uh, it's like, what happened? Yeah, whoa.
Working at home isn't so bad sometimes.
Yeah, no, it's not.
This dude.
Yes.
He he's like, he's a, he's a, he has something to the construction of the building.